At the San Carlos City Council meeting for September 24th, 2012, let's all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We don't have that long of an agenda, so I can't imagine there's any changes, but I'll ask-
There are not, Mr. Mayor? No changes this evening?
No changes. Reports from closed session.
Mr. Mayor, we had a special meeting immediately before this meeting, and there were closed-session items on that agenda. There are no reportable actions. However, there are three actions you're going to be taking during the regular meeting that were part of a closed session.
Thank you. Brings us to item four, which is council communications and announcements. Any announcements or things council members would like to share?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I attended a CCAG meeting of the Environmental Quality and Congestion Management Subcommittee today. And I'll be passing some information about some financing programs, staff, for energy efficiency and alternative energy projects, just to make sure you're aware of them. And as some people may recall, I missed the last council meeting because I was off in Europe dropping my daughter off for vacation. And in a little thanks for the fact that you guys didn't load me up with a lot of responsibilities while I was gone, I brought a little gift back for you.
All right.
So I will allow you to choose.
Is this all for me?
No.
Is this the haggis we were expecting?
No, this is not haggis. This is actually Italian chocolate.
Do I have to put this on my Form 700?
It's less than $25.
Unless you want-
I think it's less than $50.
Much less, much less.
Is it okay, Mr. City Attorney?
Doesn't matter?
More than $50. Yeah, more than $50.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're quite welcome.
Extra dark, just, yeah, good. Okay. Anything else, Mr. Olbert?
That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Ms. Clapper?
Well, I was enjoying myself while you were off in Scotland and Italy. The last two weeks in September were fairly busy because I think it was the end of the fiscal year in June for a lot of nonprofits, and then they were off on the summer. So a couple of things that I did was I went to the CERT barbecue that brought together the CERT members from San Carlos, Redwood City, and Belmont. There were about 50 members who were there for the day. And joined a lunch for the Friends of the Library, a volunteer recognition lunch. And San Mateo Housing Heroes Award event, where they recognized five outstanding service providers in the county. And then the Samaritan House Volunteer Recognition Event, which recognized 30-plus outstanding volunteers. So that was really great to get an opportunity to see some of these people who have contributed so much to the community and make not only our city, but the whole county, a great place to live in. And then, similar to the meeting that you attended, Councilmember Olbert, I attended this last week, the Peninsula Traffic Congestion Relief Alliance Board, a mouthful. It's also known as Commute.org, that receives money from CCAG for doing different kinds of transportation projects, including shuttle vans. So we had one of our two-month board meetings.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Verge-Meier.
That's my report.
I feel like I didn't go to Scotland and I didn't go to all those nonprofits, so I don't really have anything to report.
Okay. Well, the only thing I would like to report is I did attend a fundraising dinner for the Kiwanis. I think they do this, they're smart, they only do these every two years. So they get a very good attendance, very good participation. They had a silent auction, and then they had a live auction. In fact, this council was auctioned off. I don't know if you guys know that or not. You'll be hearing from them. And it was very successful. I got an email from the past president, I believe it was, of the Kiwanis, and she was saying they had a very successful event and raised lots of money. And, you know, it's fun to report on something like that because it's, as I, they asked me to, you know, give a little speech beforehand, so I kept it short. But I did talk about how those kind of events are really signature of San Carlos, the way we like to participate in things and support things, and we're an active community. So it was, like I said, it was over at the Adult Community Center, very successful. Greg, do you have anything to add as a fellow Kiwani?
Well, we had a, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had to report that it was indeed very successful, and a good time was had by all, and I enjoyed participating in it myself. And we had a lot of participation, not only from members, but people who donated from the community, things for the silent auction, and so that's always greatly appreciated.
Very good. And just to be fair, and because I know people watch this on TV sometimes, we do have four service groups in San Carlos. If you're interested in joining, you could look into the Kiwanis that we've mentioned. There's Rotary, and there's Alliance Club, and I think I said four, maybe there's just three. Am I missing one?
Three?
Three. Just three, yeah. So there's three. I don't believe so.
There's a few, I mean, there's three service clubs.
Three service clubs, yeah, and that's what I was talking about, three service clubs. So those are out there, if folks are interested in joining, participating, and being a part of the community in that fashion. All right, so we'll move on to item five, public comment. I have one card here from, oh, this is on 60. Okay, sorry, I thought it was public comment. So we have reached public comment, all the same, and this is if anybody would like to address the council on any items that are not on our posted agenda. And I see somebody coming forward.
Hi.
Hello.
My name is Emily Glanville, and I work for a nonprofit called Ecology Action. And we're going to be hosting a free workshop event on Tuesday, October 9th, from 6:30 to 8:30 p.m. at the San Carlos Library. At the workshop, residents can learn more about how to get involved with the Energy Upgrade California Program. They can hear testimony from a local resident who has gone through the Energy Upgrade California Program, as well as meet contractors from the area that are certified to do these energy upgrades. So we hope to see all of you guys there. And again, it's a free workshop event, open to homeowners of the City of San Carlos, on Tuesday, October 9th, from 6:30 to 8:30 p.m. at the San Carlos Library. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Item six is the consent calendar. This is a basket of items, if you will, that would be approved with one motion unless anyone from the public or council would like to have an item pulled and discussed separately. And I do have somebody who would, would you like to see 60 pulled?
No, I'm here, I'm near Donna Davis.
Yeah, I'm aware of that. You wanted to at least speak on that item. Okay, all right, Ma' Donna.
Mayor, make a motion to approve items 6A, B, C, E, F, G, H, I, J, K on the consent calendar.
Second.
And, Mr. Mayor, just for formality's sake, we'd like you to read the title on the two adoptions of ordinances in the consent calendar.
Okay. Let me get my eyes out here. Which of those, Mr. City Attorney, which of those?
G and H, I believe.
G and H?
H and I.
Oh, I'm sorry, H and I. What do I know?
All right, so you want the title read? Okay. Ordinance number 1449, ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Carlos, amending Chapter 2.08 of the Municipal Code Regarding City Council Vacancies and Regular Meeting Place. That's 6H. And 6I would be ordinance number 1450, ordinance of the City of San Carlos, amending Chapter 15.56 of the San Carlos Municipal Code, Flood Damage Prevention Sections 15.56.030, 15.56.070, and 15.56.200.
All right. Are we in good shape? All right, we had a second. Roll call?
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins is absent. Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Grocott?
Yes. All right, for sake of brevity, why don't we just go ahead and take item 60 now and pull that up? So we have a speaker on that item, Ma' Donna Davis?
I'm here, Donna Davis.
Okay, I'm sorry about that.
I'm here, Donna Davis. And I put in a claim against three cities because on April 19th, I was picked up at the, the Daily City Bar by a paratransit. I didn't have a car then, so I was in a car accident from another paratransit who stopped on their brakes, thrust me to the front of the SUV, and almost broke my jaw. So this restoration I'm wearing, I was on route that day, on the 19th, to go see a specialist who would correct my jaw. I had painted my jaw, didn't break the teeth, just TMJ. He proceeded to pick me up, and when he picked me up, I got on the handicap ramp, as I usually do with my little cart and stuff, and then he just poked me with his one finger, just went to the back of my back, right here. And I actually thought I was bleeding. So when I got to the doctor, I didn't make a yada-yada about it, I just said to him, you know, I'd rather sit here than there, and I said, at the end of the trip, I told him, I said, "You punched me, you poked me in my back, and it feels very, it hurts, and I reported you to your dispatcher." So then he says, "Well, let me see where I poke you." I says, "No, I just reported you to the dispatcher, please let me off the bus." He let me off the bus. I began to call the police inside the doctor's office. The nurse called me in, we opened up my blouse. I wasn't there to get examined, but she looked to see if I was bleeding, because it felt like I was bleeding. It felt like a gun was in my back. You don't take a senior citizen, I'm 60, you don't take them and poke them, you have to do this, and you're not supposed to actually put, well, some people have put their hand on my back, but I've never felt anybody trying to help a senior from falling off the handicap ramp by poking them like there was a gun. And it hurt.
Ms. Davis? I don't want to be rude or anything, but we usually keep public comment to about two minutes, and I failed to say that beforehand.
I'm going to clean it up at the very, so I sued. I didn't sue, I put a claim against Ready Wheels. They denied it. Carl Warren denied it. City of Daly City denied it, River City denied it. And then I got a letter from San Carlos saying, "We're going to take your case to ABAAG", which is your adjuster, Martin Hune, and your secretary, Julia, senior analyst, "And today you're going to deny me." And so I'm here to plead that you don't deny me. The cases were $20,000, and I brought it down to a small claims court action, because it was $2,000 worth of medication, and I went to the urgent care. It was tenderness in my back, and it hurt. And I had medication, I had some strong medication to take away the pain. This is not to punish anybody, it's just, and I think that guy is still working for you. And I don't know if you guys have anything about doing the hiring, but I'm here to say you shouldn't hire people to do people like that. I'm a visitor, and I love this area, and I shouldn't be bleeding or feeling bad about visiting this area.
Okay.
So that's my comment.
All right, well, thank you for coming and speaking to us.
And if I'm going to be denied, I'll take it to court. But I need your referral to the court, so I can take it to the judge. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Did anybody have any comment on this?
Well, yeah, briefly. Ms. Davis, just wanted to, you know, before you go, we are the City of San Carlos. We have nothing, nothing to do with Samtrans, Ready Wheels, any of that.
But they operate in your city.
Well, they operate in every city, ma'am. They operate in every city up and down the peninsula. You're absolutely right, they do. But we don't give them, we don't have the license to do that. They happen to drive through our city.
They are everybody from their area.
Right. And I just wanted to explain that to you, because they aren't a direct employee or even an indirect employee of ours, so-
There's some type of, one minute, there's some type of concern that if you're a public community and you're housing, you know, you're transporting people in transportation under transportation laws, you do have to have some type of governing-
Well, I'm sure there is one, but I think you're at the wrong court, you're at the wrong courthouse here, because City of San Carlos, again, not trying to be rude, just trying to explain it to you. And that's why we're, we'll be probably following our staff's recommendation to deny this claim. But I just wanted to make sure I explained that to you.
I'm going to have all the letters from all the cities that-
I understand completely, and we appreciate you coming, but just wanted to make sure that you understood what we're going to be doing. Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, do you have a motion?
I'm asking a question, can I get that one right away?
We'll see that staff gets it to you as quickly as possible, yeah?
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we accept staff's recommendation and deny the claim.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, roll call?
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Grocott?
Yes. Okay, that brings us to item, let me turn over to my agenda, sorry.
It's eight.
Seven. Should be item seven, which is reports to council. And I don't see anything listed there, so-
Yep, there are no agendas, reports to council this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yes.
And item 8A is consideration of an abandonment of a public easement over two adjacent lots at 665 Prospect Street. And this is the first time Jay has taken one of these on, I believe.
For us.
For us, yeah, that's right. Probably not the first time.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Jay Walter, Public Works Director, and indeed, my first opportunity to have a presentation item for you. Tonight, we are asking you to consider the proposed abandonment of a public utility easement across two parcels at 665 Prospect Street. Essentially, the public utility easement is something that is granted over private property for the purposes of public utilities being able to serve those or adjacent properties. Most often, these easements are granted in favor of the city, essentially, when this land is subdivided. So many of them have been in place for a long period of time, and such is the case with the one that you're going to consider tonight. And that's the reason why the city is requesting and will process the abandonment of this public utility easement. So section, so the vacation and abandonment of public utility easements is covered in Section 8320 of the California Streets and Highways Code, a very complex web of language. But essentially, what it does is it requires a public hearing to be held in the jurisdiction where the easement is located, and it has to be noticed and posted at the property for a certain number of days. And the property owner usually requests these so that they can unencumber the property for the future. Because if there is no need for an easement across the property, then having that easement vacated, then it kind of cleans up the title, and it helps with future sale and lease of the property, depending upon what the property owner is going to be doing with it. So what's required of the vacation process? A letter from the property owner, typically requesting that we do that. The property owner then has to hire a licensed surveyor to go through and create a legal description of the easement across the property. That is a cost to the property owner. He also, as part of our city process, he has to pay a fee, an deposit, for the city staff that work on and process this item. And a deposit is used so that we can hire our own city surveyor, who we have on call, to review the adequacy of the legal description. He's also supposed to get support from affected neighbors, if there are any, that are also encumbered by the easement across their property, and in this case, there are none. And we need to provide, the property owner needs to provide documentation from the utility companies whom the easement was granted in favor of, to be sure that they have no current need nor any anticipated future need for the easement for their utility, excuse me. And that is something that the property owner has provided, and it was part of your agenda package, letters from each of those companies. And showing on the screen right now is essentially a diagram with the subject easement. Prospect Street is shown here, and then there are actually two public utility easements that have been granted across this parcel, and the request is that both would be abandoned or vacated. And so the staff's recommendation is simply to adopt a resolution ordering the abandonment of the public utility easements across the property at 665 Prospect Street. At this point, I'd be available for questions from council.
Any questions?
No.
Mr. Olbert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Walter. By the way, just as an aside, I was fascinated to see in the material we were given that Arroyo, or a street named, that would have been named Arroyo, at one point was planned to run through this area. I've been fascinated to see the number of streets that don't exist or were abandoned over the course of the city's history. But my question is, I've seen the letters from the utilities that basically are declaiming any interest in the easement. Is there any exposure to the city if it turns out that this is being undertaken as a mistake, or is, you know, that they have to reapply for an easement?
There's no exposure to the city, because we gave them the opportunity to comment, and we asked them specifically about current and future plans. So the consequence to the utility company in the future, if they do find out or realize they need an easement, is that they'll have to approach the property owner and negotiate for that easement.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Actually, I do have one question. I was just making the assumption that this is being done because of the project that was approved back in 2010 for a small development of, I think it was six or seven homes in the area. Is that still-
As far as I know, that's still what's planned, and this is part of that process.
Okay, thank you.
So these are usually rather routine, and usually they have to do with streets, you know, the giving up part of the right-of-way, if you will. But this one is just a little bit less so, and it brings to mind just a couple of questions. I don't want to stay on this topic a whole long time, but when this is done, does it do anything to, does it impact the city in either of two ways? One, in terms of liability in any such way, in other words, prior to abandoning an easement, if something happens on the easement, somebody gets hurt or something like that, do we have any exposure? Are we reducing our exposure, I guess would be the question?
Well, the, actually, the underlying exposure is to the property owner, because if something happens on the property, they're the underlying owner, and so they would be, they would be exposed to some liability.
Right.
Because the city has no facilities across the property that are, essentially, we'll call them the mainline city facilities. We don't have any exposure either. This property will be served by, for the sewer, the sewer lateral and the water connections from Prospect Street onto the property. So it would be as if it was just being served like on a normal street. No further extension of the mains into the property is anticipated.
And tax-wise, property tax-wise?
That's not, I do not know the answer to that question.
Well, through the mayor, there could be actually an increase in property taxes because the property won't be encumbered by an easement any longer.
Right. Just, the reason I asked that last one is it just makes me think, you know, we do get these on occasion, usually they're caused by somebody wanting to do development, as Ms. Clapper referred to. But one wonders if we, and I don't even know if this can be part of the process, if we were to do research and find areas where there appear to be easements that aren't being used, and we could get them, you know, encourage the process and do it all in one big package, and then it would, it would help us out in the long run in terms of tax base. So it's just something that crossed my mind as we looked at this.
I think the issue, one of the reasons we don't do that is because of the cost involved in the surveying and assessment work that are borne by the property owners in these cases.
Okay. All right, well, those are just a few questions. This is a public hearing. Do we have anybody from the public here? I don't see anybody, and I think Mr. Olbert has one more question.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, it was a reaction to what you just said. You know, when I was on the school board, there was some discussion about possibly looking for a new site. The district and the city might have looked at swapping properties in order to have a new school site. And it was very interesting to me about how much city-owned property there is in little bits and pieces around the town. And I've often wondered whether or not, at some point, there would be some value in getting input from staff as to whether there's something that could be done with that, either by consolidating it, or selling it, or turning it into community gardens, or something. So I mention that because I'd like to sort of encourage that if we have time to do that at some point.
Not under this item, but I see where you're going. Okay. So I need a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay. I move that we adopt resolution number-
We have to first close the public hearing before we adopt anything.
Okay, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. I should remember that from planning commission. Okay, I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, none opposed? Okay, now you can go ahead with your direction.
I've lost the moment. Yeah. I move that we adopt resolution number 2012-.
59.
59. Resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos, abandonment of a public utility easement over two adjacent lots at 665 Prospect Street.
Second.
Do we need roll call on this, then? Yeah, okay.
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Grocott?
Yes. All right. Thank you. Next item is item 9A, which is a settlement agreement. This is what Mr. Rubens was referring to earlier when he was giving a report from closed session. This is one of the items.
Mr. Mayor, council members, item 9A is a settlement agreement. This is under the Successor Agency to the Redevelopment Agency of the City of San Carlos. As the staff report reflects, back in 2009, the Redevelopment Agency was sued by our three local school districts, the Community College District, the Sequoia Union High School District, and the San Carlos Elementary School District, over a very complicated formula involving redevelopment funds and the pass-through agreements that the city and the school districts had entered into back in 1986. Late last year, the Superior Court in San Mateo County issued a judgment in that action against the San Carlos Redevelopment Agency for about $4.3 million, $4.4 million. The City, the Redevelopment Agency decided to appeal that judgment in January of 2012. In the meantime, at the end of December, and I should say that, that, the state, during this whole process, the state decided to end redevelopment agencies. And Supreme Court ruled on the constitutionality of the ending of redevelopment late last year, but the redevelopment agencies still existed technically until January 31st of 2012. Two days before the termination of the Redevelopment Agency, the Sequoia Union High School District filed a new lawsuit against the San Carlos Redevelopment Agency. What the settlement agreement before you tonight does is settle the underlying lawsuit, the new lawsuit that was filed in January 2012, the appeal of the judgment that was filed by the Redevelopment Agency, and the cross-appeal that was filed by the Sequoia Union High School District. All those are settled in favor of a new stipulated judgment. And then on top of that, the settlement is contingent on two things, the entry of this new stipulated judgment that would replace the existing judgment and approval by the Department of Finance in Sacramento. If that all happens, then the settlement agreement would be, the stipulated judgment would be entered, and the settlement agreement would provide for $6.3 million to be paid to the three school districts from the successor agency funds that are on hand, not affecting the City of San Carlos. The, so, and those are specified, I don't have the numbers at the top of my head, but they're in the staff report, and the three amounts are, in varying amounts, to the three school districts. So that would, the settlement agreement has a lot of complicated provisions. Staff is recommending that the City Council adopt the resolution that's in the packet that would authorize the city manager to sign the settlement agreement substantially in the form as reflected here. I might add that the settlement, the final settlement agreement wasn't in your packet, but it was just made available today, and it's substantially the same as the staff report provisions. There's no material change in any of those provisions. So I'm available for any questions you might have.
I think I have those figures, if you-
Yeah, I could read them if you want, Mr. Mayor, into the record.
I've got them right here, if you want me to. I'll just read them, and then we're got them, at least we've stated them publicly. I'll just read them, and then we're got them, at least we've stated them publicly. It looks like it's three, I'm going to round numbers here, $3.75 million to the high school district, $1.85 million to the elementary school district, and just under $900,000 to the college district.
Seven hundred and seventy-nine.
What is it? Oh, 689. I don't have my glasses. Sorry. Six hundred and eighty-nine thousand to the college district. So those are those figures you're referring to. Okay. Very good. Anything else? Any questions? Mr. Olbert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Rubens, for that summary. Without necessarily going into the mathematical detail, just conceptually, I noticed that the allocation percentages in Section 2, little i, A, B, and C, they vary depending upon whether the receiving school district is basic aid or not. What was the logic behind driving the different percentages? And again, not the precision, just the concept.
The basic concept, the basic concept was that the three districts have different statuses under state school finance law at the present time. There's something called a basic aid district, and there's a revenue limit district. When the difference for the percentages is, some districts may, we're trying to foresee in the settlement agreement that some districts may go in and out of being revenue limit to basic aid districts. And when they're, if all the districts became basic aid districts, then that would impact the successor agency's ability to pay funds that it is obligated to pay under the ROPS and its bonds and all that. So the formula changes if the San Carlos Elementary School District becomes a basic aid district, or if the Community College District moves in and out of basic aid district. The Sequoia District is a basic aid district, and it's, has been for a long time, and there's no, it's not anticipated that it will move out of that status.
Oh, I see. So what happens is there's, since there's a limited stream of money, and if the claim gets larger because somebody becomes basic aid, then you have to reallocate everything to shift the money around and make sure there's enough money to pay the remaining bills?
That's right. And that's the change in the percentage downward to 50%.
Okay.
If all three are, if the Sequoia and the elementary district become both basic aid, it drops down to the 50%.
Well, thank you for that explanation, and I'll just say, not as a question, but thank you also to all your efforts and Mr. Malphey's efforts and various other people's efforts to negotiate this and bring this to what we hope will be a successful conclusion.
So let's get it approved before anybody changes their mind, right?
Good idea.
All right. entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I would be pleased to move that we approve resolution number 2012-51?
Sixty.
What was it?
Sixty.
Sixty, sorry. Resolution number 2012-60. Resolution of the successor agency to the redevelopment agency of the City of San Carlos for approval of settlement agreement with the San Mateo County Community College District, Sequoia Union High School District, and San Carlos Elementary School District, and authorizing city manager to sign on behalf of the City of San Carlos.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
I'm sorry, I have a question. What's the difference between the first, the language didn't make any sense to me. It says we're approving a settlement agreement, and what does the second one say, the one we're going to talk about next? There's a language difference, I see it, but ...
The second agreement is an agreement between the City of San Carlos and the school districts. The first is between the successor agency.
Redevelopment, okay, I'm sorry. I missed that. I apologize. Yes?
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Grokot?
Yes.
All right. That brings us to the next item, which is connected.
The next item is definitely connected. This is a City of San Carlos item. It's an effort to proactively resolve a potential claim, as reflected in the staff reports, complicated by the state's dissolution of redevelopment. Once the San Carlos Redevelopment Agency terminated, the City of San Carlos became one of the taxing agencies that would be entitled to a portion of the former redevelopment agency funds on a go-forward basis and the funds that are on hand. This is an attempt by the districts and the City of San Carlos to recognize that claim. So the city's share of property tax money is roughly 11 and 1/2%. So this is a settlement amount of the potential claim that the city would have on the monies that the districts are receiving under the prior settlement.
So we didn't sue ourselves or anything?
No, this is the district's, this is the city's claim against the districts that it's resolving.
All right. Any questions?
No.
One down here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, Mr. Rubens, I just want to make sure I understand that when we're approving this tonight, my understanding is that there's still a few little details that remain to be worked out, and what are those?
Well, this has three details that need to move forward before it can be fully implemented. The first is the Court of Appeals will enter, enters the stipulated judgment in the other matter. The second is the Department of Finance approves the stipulation in the other matter, and the third is the final, well, probably this comes first, the execution of the agreements by the districts.
Oh, I see. So in other words, the language in here is, it's language complete. It's waiting on some other actions.
That's right.
I had misunderstood some of the earlier discussion. I thought there was some language that needed to be tweaked.
No, no, we don't have the final versions of this agreement, but the, my understanding is the changes will be insubstantial, filling in some blanks and maybe some clarifications. These agreements are much simpler than the prior agreement that the successor agency reviewed.
Thank you. Just want to understand what we're delegating to Mr. Malphey.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve resolution number 2012- ...
Sixty-one.
Sixty-one. Resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos for approval of settlement agreements with the San Mateo County Community College District, Sequoia Union High School District, and San Carlos Elementary School District, and authorizing city manager to sign on behalf of the City of San Carlos.
Second? Is there a second?
Yes, I second.
Okay. Roll call.
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Grokot?
Yes.
All right. Item 9C is consideration of a resolution to adopt a memorandum of understanding for the International Association of Firefighters Local 2400 Unit. Ms. Mendenhall.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Rebecca Mendenhall, Administrative Services Director. Before you tonight, for consideration is a memorandum of understanding tentatively agreed to by the Firefighters Union Local 2400. This MOU proposes a 2% increase in base salary and the addition of a holiday in lieu and a float-in lieu benefit. The holiday and float-in lieu benefit brings this unit in line with the holiday pay received by other city employees and represents the equivalent of 80 hours of paid holidays and 40 hours of floating holidays. The cost of this benefit and the salary increase totaling $146,500 has already been factored into the budget that was adopted in June. In addition, this MOU proposes that the salary adjustments be retroactive to October 1st of 2011 for only those members who were employed at that time and who are also still employed as of the effective date. The one-time cost of the retroactivity is estimated to be a little less than $120,000 and can be paid for from prior year unallocated fund balance, which as of right now is estimated to be $2.9 million. So in summary, the key components of this agreement are the term will be through February 28, 2013, unless the extension is mutually agreed upon, the increase in base wage of 2% effective October 1, 2011, the addition of the holiday in lieu and the float-in lieu pay, the addition of acting pay for firefighters who are qualified to serve as captain with the approval of the fire chief, and the continuation of the same health benefit that other city employees have, where the employees will pick up the first 5% of medical increases. I'd like to extend my thanks to the employees of the fire union for working with the city over the past year to negotiate this contract, especially Tom Jinks and Chuck Lacks. So I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right. Thank you. Any questions?
No.
None? Okay. Thank you very much. Any discussion on the item? Or we should have a motion first, I suppose, then we can discuss it.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the council adopt resolution number 2012-62?
Correct.
Resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos adopting the memorandum of understanding between the City of San Carlos and the International Association of Firefighters, IAFF Local 2400 Unit.
Second.
All right. We have a motion. We have a second. Do we have any discussion on the item? None? Okay. Roll call.
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Grokot?
Yes.
Very good. Moving right along, that brings us to item 9D, which has to do with the Palo Alto Medical Foundation, and they've got some public art going on there, and we're going to take a look at that and have a discussion about it, I suppose.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Doug Long, Parks and Recreation Director. As you know, the Palo Alto Medical Foundation is developing a new medical center on Industrial Road, and as part of that project, PAMP is to provide at least one piece of significant public art. They developed a public art proposal, made that proposal to the Arts and Culture Commission, and the Arts and Culture Commission approved that and recommended that the City Council adopt that. This evening is David Jury from PAMP, as well as the author, excuse me, artist Larry Kirkland to present that, the public art project to you this evening, and after that, we'll be happy to answer any of your questions.
Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council, I am David Jury, Vice President of Sports Services for the Palo Alto Medical Foundation. First of all, I am very, very pleased for the first time to stand here and say we are under construction with the Palo Alto Medical Foundation San Carlos Center. It's very exciting for us to stop digging up dirt and start building something. We are moving ahead, and we are on target for a 2014 opening. The purpose of tonight's meeting is really to get you acquainted with our artist Larry Kirkland, who is standing here with me. Larry has a studio and a home in Washington, DC, and he has an international reputation for public art. He has a lot of experience in large-scale public art projects, and this is the third project that I personally will have done with Larry, and I trust him. Tonight, I believe that it is your responsibility to determine whether or not this project is significant and is appropriate for the site. We have a significant budget. If you want to discuss that, we can, but that's apparently not part of the ordinance. I guess I'll just let Larry talk us through the project a little bit. This won't be very long, and we appreciate your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Jury.
I haven't spoken before a mayor and a city council, I think, in my entire art life, so it's always a first, and it's nice to be here. David, I'm going to let you give this book. It's less than $50, so it shouldn't be a problem, but it's a new monograph on my work. And how do we move this forward? Okay. I'm a public artist. I make work in the public arena. I don't make work in a studio that's about me and put it in a gallery. I work with people like David and communities all over the world to create pieces that are really about them. So this project in Portland, Oregon was supposed to be a playground, but the police said we need to be able to drive a car right through it. So it evolved into a maze. Next slide. And the maze is made from recycled cobblestones and 150 pavers that ask you questions about your life. So the idea is to go through this maze and tell your own life story. This has a little relevance for our project here. Next. So how did we get here? Next. What is your fear? Who do you love? What is your sadness? Also in Portland, Oregon, an old piece, but a significant piece, in the old, original public library, they had to replace the old marble stairs, and they only had enough money to replace them with carpet. So we took the art money and matched it with the carpet money and made an engraved granite carpet that has hidden in it, next, in this kind of floral carpet, it has hidden in it words and images that you would find if you're looking in the library. Next. See the airplane there? This also has some relevance to our project. A project in Chapel Hill, North Carolina, in front of the Transit Drivers Administration Building. I spent three days riding around on the buses, looking at the hills of the Piedmont of North Carolina, and asking the drivers what things I should be looking for, and the thing that they were most aware of were dogs and bicycles. So that's included in this carved stone bench that looks like the hills of North Carolina. Next. Next. We always put in a figure to give something scale, so we were just lucky to have the squirrel come. And this project is honoring the publisher and editor of the Charlotte, North Carolina newspaper. Rolf was a real champion of the arts. This is in front of the North Carolina Children's Library and Children's Theater. So the piece had to honor Rolf, but it also had to say, "This is a library," and also act as a theater. So I took the tools of his trade. His favorite tool was his old Remington black-and-white typewriter. So those keys become seats that you can sit on to make a performance up on the stage. Next. Next. He also talks a lot about telling the truth and hearing the truth. So there are three stamps that he would stamp papers with, to hear the truth, to seek the truth, and then one to speak the truth. Next. And the top of it, this big tower of his books, is capped with an inkwell and a wind vane that is a gilded quill pen. And what's interesting is when anybody goes there, depending, it doesn't make any difference if they're as old as David and I, or as young as a three-year-old, they spell their name out on the typewriter keys. It was totally unintended, but a really nice thing. Next. And the last is a project for a private development in Pasadena, California, where I got to design an 80-by-80-foot garden. Next. That has a paver that goes around, that has images from the local community, and it acts like a game, two different colors of pavers, and the images shift from paver to paver in terms of their color. Next. And there are four places to sit that are carved granite pieces. Next. If I can put an ice cream cone in any project, I'll do it. Next. Next. So for our project, one of the key things that the design team really wanted to do was to use the art to connect the facility with the city, because the facility is set somewhat back from the major road, and there is a walkway that will lead from bus drop-offs ...
From Industrial Road.
... back into the facility. So with, working with the landscape architect and with the architects, how can the art strengthen that and make that connection much more important? Next. I've always been interested in these moon gates. Moon gates are Chinese. They usually put you into a garden, but it's a major transition that makes you aware of going through something. So for our project, we have four gates, and unlike a moon gate, this is a key gate. When we go to see a doctor, we're looking for answers to questions about ourselves. And I'm one-half of the formula of doctor-patient. I'm not a doctor, but I'm a patient. I know when I go into the office, I'm always wondering, okay, what's the answer to this question? And so that key is to suggest that we're looking for answers. Next. These are large granite blocks, and they're, next, and the inside of them is deeply engraved with different patterns from different cultures that then have things that are hidden inside them. So as you go through that, you are in this kind of special room. Here's an old English ... Here's an old English wallpaper print, things that are hidden inside it that you would see every time you go through, probably some ice cream. Next. A Chinese lattice. There's a tortoise in this one. Next. This is a Japanese ring of leaves. Next. And opposite the turtle is a hare. The tortoise and the hare is an image I like to put into my projects. As you go through the gate, will be these question pavers, and the questions are going to be developed with David's staff. What kind of questions do we ask ourselves as we are going through these gates, as we're going through life? Next. I think this is Rebecca going through this gate, is that right?
The color on this is better on your monitors, I think.
What monitors? Maybe there, yeah.
Next. So this is how they line up, and I think that that is what strengthens this whole connection between the medical center and the city. It really lines these things up in an allay that makes you want to go through the axis. Next. I think these last two slides really show in a rendering how this is to be perceived and to be used.
Happy to answer questions.
All right. Thank you for the presentation. Questions?
The questions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll just make a brief comment. Having spent the last week looking at the remnants of classical architecture in Rome, it's nice to see something you can walk through that's not made out of brick.
All right. It's a very nice presentation.
It is.
And I appreciate it very much, all the detail and so forth.
Thank you. We appreciate the opportunity to be here, and one of the things that you, I think, saw tonight that I really like about Larry's work is that while he takes his art seriously, he also wants to make us laugh. Wants to find some humor in this, and we often feel the need to find humor in our life at the medical foundation. So thank you very much for your attention. We hope you like it.
Thank you very much.
Yep, thank you very much for putting that much effort into it. Public art can so often just be one element to look at and just immediately walk by, but this, I think, creating it as an experience is a very nice gift to that location. Thank you.
So we need a motion to approve?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the council approve the, actually, I don't see...
I think it's just that you can read the item title, I think, and it'll be all right.
Yeah, okay. Approve the Palo Alto, the proposed Palo Alto Medical Foundation public art project.
Second.
Second. Any discussion?
I'd just like to also chime in, Mr. Kirkland. Thank you so much for coming all this way to speak to our body, and I have not, to be honest, heard of you before, but I'm going to go Google you when I get home, and I'm sure I'm going to find a lot of good things that you've shown us. So thank you for gracing our city with this art. I appreciate that.
And just as an opportunity to comment also, and I don't want to, anybody else want to say anything?
No. Thank you.
Just a couple of things come to mind. One, I appreciate the artwork very much. I remember being up here when we were approving artwork for downtown, and one of the other council members, because I voted against the piece, asked me, what, you don't appreciate art? This I appreciate, I very much do, because it's interactive, it causes you to think and ponder things. It's just good work. I appreciate it very much. And it also puts me in mind of when we were debating the merits of the Palo Alto Medical Foundation project years ago, and had the meeting at the Hillary Aviation Museum, and I remember thinking and saying at the time, what I see here in Palo Alto Medical Foundation being new residents of our city, if you will, is an organization that will help to put us on the map, if you will. And I think they're striving for excellence in what they're doing out there at that site in so many ways, and this is depicted, that excellence is depicted here in this, the selection of the artists and the work we're seeing, is an example, I think, of how this project will put San Carlos on the map. Not that we're not on the map already, but it will help highlight us as a city and as a destination place. I see this campus as not just a place that people may go because, you know, they need to see the doctor. When you have something like this, people will go just to go, because they'll hear about it. So I appreciate your being members of our community and the work you're doing out there at Industrial Road. Thank you. All right, we can vote on this then.
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Grocott?
Yes. And I think we've achieved a record. The meeting is adjourned at 7:55, something like that.